All right. Good evening, everyone. How's everybody this evening?
Doing well.
I'd like to go ahead and this time call the meeting to order. This is the regular scheduled meeting of Collin County Council, which is held the first Tuesday of each month. Tonight is Tuesday, February the first, two thousand and twenty-two. It is six P. M. We are, the meeting is being held virtually due to the COVID nineteen pandemic, and you can, public is, of course, allowed to attend and stream the meeting at W W W Collin County dot O R G slash live. And in any individual who would like to participate in public comments can do so at W W W Collin County dot O R G slash comment. So at this time, I'd like to go ahead and call a role Vice Chairman Taylor.
Yeah.
Councilman Flowers.
Yeah.
Councilman Wetzel.
Here.
Councilman Williams.
Present.
Before we get started, I'm gonna ask Councilman Taylor, if he would, lead us in the invocation, followed by the pledge of allegiance for everyone. Please, please rise at this time.
Most gracious heavenly father, we do thank you for all of your manifold grace that you bestowed upon Colliton County, South Carolina. Lord, we thank you for this council. We thank you for the administration, the staff, for all of our guests, and everyone that works and serves, lives in this community. We pray your favor over this meeting tonight, that we would be prudent in decision making, that you would get glory out of our life, and we'll give your name the praise forever. In Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Vice Chairman Taylor.
Yeah.
Before we get started in the agenda, I would like to make a motion to amend the agenda to delete item ten D under new business, which is a resolution twenty-two R dash oh eight to appoint members of the board vacancy. We had a position there for accommodations tax board, and the individual does not meet requirements. Therefore, we don't have any, any advocates for that position currently. So.
I second the motion.
Okay, got a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say the five by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? And that motion carries unanimously. Now brings us to item four on the agenda approval of minutes of the regular meeting, January fourth, two thousand and twenty-two.
A move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say the five by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries unanimously. Brings us to item five, awards and recognition. We don't have any this evening. Then we'll move to item six on the agenda. Appearances and public presentations. Under item A, we have a presentation for the two thousand and twenty-one audit report by Mr. David Irwin, CPA with Malden and Jenkins LLC. Mr. Irwin, I believe, is online with us. Good evening, Mr. Irwin. Glad to have you.
Good evening. How are y'all doing?
Good morning. Okay.
Great, great.
And everybody was provided three documents in their packet, but I'm gonna turn over to Mr. Irwin at this time. Let him make the presentation.
Okay. I have shared my screen here. Can you all see it okay?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Well, uh, well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Hope you all are doing well. Again, my name is David Irwin, and I with Malden Jenkins. I was the partner who oversaw this year's audit of the county's financial statements, and I certainly appreciate the opportunity to be here with you all this evening, to discuss with you the results of this year's audit. Moving on. There we go. All right. I don't want to take up too much of your time tonight, but you know, the purpose of this evening's presentation is to provide you all an overview of our independent audit report, talk about the results of the two compliance reports that we issue in conjunction with the audit, hit a few of the financial statement highlights, discuss some information that the auditing standards requires that we communicate to you all, and of course, to answer any questions that you all may have. Now, financial statements themselves, they are the responsibility of the county's management and members of the council. As your independent auditors, our responsibility is to express an opinion on these statements. We conducted our audit in accordance with governmental auditing standards and generally accepted auditing standards, and I'm happy to say that we are issuing a clean or unmodified opinion on this year's report. This is what you want. This is the highest level of assurance that we can provide as your external auditor. What this means is that, in our opinion, the financial statements are considered to be fairly stated in all material respects, in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. As part of the audit, there are two compliance reports that we've also issued, the first of which is the single audit report. Now, again, a single audit is a compliance audit that is required when an entity spends over seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in federal funds during the year. You all had federal expenditures of just under six million dollars for fiscal year twenty-one. As was the case with the financial audit, we are issuing a clean or unmodified opinion on the single audit as well. The second compliance report that we issue is called the Yellow Book Report, and this is a report on the county's internal controls and your compliance with the various laws and regulations. And I'm pleased to share with you all that we do not have any audit findings reporting you all this year, meaning we noted no material weaknesses or significant efficiencies in the county's internal control during our audit. And yeah, I believe I've mentioned this to you all before, but you know, with all the new accounting standards and changes that are being implemented each year, and really just how complex the financial reporting process has become, it makes it all the more impressive when I can report to you all that we're issuing a clean opinion with no audit findings. So again, that's something that everyone at the county should be proud of. You know, these obviously continue to be, unfortunately, some, some unique and unusual times, but you know, from an audit standpoint, I'm, I can honestly say that this year was, was business as usual. You know, John and his staff, they did a great job again this year. They're always very accommodating to our audit team. They work hard to address all our questions and get us everything that we need in order to get the audit finalized on time. And you know, one thing worth noting is that of the forty-six counties in South Carolina, you all were one of only twenty-three who submitted their audit to the state by the December thirty-first deadline. So again, just, just thanks, thanks again to your staff. We've enjoyed working with them, and we appreciate their hard work this year. Now for a brief overview of your financial statements. Again, you all prepare what is called an annual comprehensive financial report, otherwise known as an ACFOR. An ACFOR requires the inclusion of additional information that, that goes above and beyond the basic requirements of financial reporting. This document is submitted annually to the Governmental Finance Officer Association, otherwise known as the GFOA, where they put it through a pretty stringent review process. They have GFOA professional staff, as well as a special review committee that looks at your report. And when they look at the county's ACFOR, you know, their goal is not to assess the financial health of the county. What they want to do is make sure that the readers of your financial statements have the necessary information available in your report to be able to do so themselves. And through this review, the GFOA, once again, awarded the county the certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting for your, your fiscal year twenty-twenty ACFOR, and that certificate is included in this year's report. And I believe this is the seventh year in a row that you all have received this certificate. So again, congratulations to you all on that. This is, this is a very impressive document, and, and one that you all should be proud of. As you look through the report, one section I always like to point out is the management's discussion analysis, otherwise known as the M D N A. If you can, I would strongly encourage you all to read this section, just the beginning of the report, right after our audit opinion. The purpose of the M D N A is, is to make it easier for a broader audience to use and better understand your, your document. And it, it does this by providing a narrative exclamation of the financial statements from the perspective of management. So again, this section does a really good job of summarizing the financial statements and, and providing the, the reader with an analytical overview of the financial activities that occurred during the year. So if you can, I would strongly encourage everyone to, to read the M D N A. Now, the county's basic financial statements, they are broken into components, the first of which be government-wide statements. Now, the government-wide statements, they provide a broad view of the county's operations in a manner similar to what you would see in the private sector business. All the county's funds are combined under a governmental activities column that is presenting your financial statements. We have a slide here that summarizes the county's financial activity for the year from the government-wide perspective. And as you can see here, the county ended the year with assets and deferred outflows of resources of a little other, of, of a little under a hundred and seven million dollars. Approximately fifty-seven and a half million of that are capital assets, net of accumulated appreciation. You also had around seventy point five million in liabilities and deferred inflows of resources as of year. Of that amount, the vast majority, around fifty-five million, are long-term in nature, meaning, you know, these are liabilities that, that are not, they're not payable in this, this current fiscal year, fiscal year twenty-two. Total revenues were a little over fifty-seven million for the year compared to expenses of just over fifty-four million, which resulted in an increase in your net position of approximately three million dollars for the year, for an ending balance of just over thirty-six billion. So again, all in all, a, a, a good year from the county from any wide perspective. If you, if you compare it to prior year, you all actually had a decrease in your net position in any wide in F Y twenty of, of one and a half million. So you all flip that and, and had an increase in net position of three million dollars as of F Y twenty-one. Again, this is the, this is the financial perspective from the government-wide, from your government-wide statements. That being, you know, this is really the only time you'll see the county's financial activities reported in this manner, you know, in the, in the day-to-day operations of the county. The focus is more so on individual funds themselves. Which brings me to the second component of your financial statements, which are all the fund level statements. Again, this is what you all typically see throughout the year. This focus, this component focuses on individual parts of the government, and it reports the county's operations in more detail than that of the Indywide statements. And when you talk about all the different funds of the county, you, if I'm in your shoes, a primary interest to me would be the general fund. You know, again, the general fund is the main operating fund of the county, and therefore, it accounts for the majority of your revenues received and funds expended. So I have a couple of charts, the next few slides that break down the, the general funds revenues and expenditures for the year. But you know, as you can see on this slide, total revenues for the general fund were approximately thirty-three and a half million dollars. That's an increase around one point six million compared to prior year. The main source of your revenue for the general fund is, is obviously taxes, which totaled around twenty-four point three million dollars, and that accounted for around seventy-three percent of your total general fund revenues for the year. Couple other revenue sources worth mentioning. You all had around six and a half million dollars in fines and fees, and approximately two point three million dollars in intergovernmental revenues for the year. Again, this next chart, it presents the general funds expenditures for the year by function. Expenditures totaled a little over thirty-two million, which is a slight decrease of approximately a hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars compared to F Y twenty. You know, as you would expect, general, general government expenditures at, right at nine point four million, and public safety expenditures at eight point four million represent the majority of your general fund expenditure for the year. So in total, the, the general funds, total fund balance increased by just under one million dollars to approximately ten million dollars as of year end. And you know, one thing I always like to remind people is that fund balance is not what you all have in the form of cash for discretionary spending. Fund balance is merely the difference between assets and liabilities, only a portion of which is cash on hand. You know, additionally, another thing to keep in mind, the general fund incurs expenditures of approximately two point six million dollars per month. So you know, you all ended the year with, with an unassigned fund balance equal to approximately four months worth of operating expenditures. You know, when you, with you all having a June thirtieth year end, you know, it's good to see that the county has a, as a, as a fund balance sufficient enough, has of June thirty to, to cover your expenditures during the months of July through November, when your, when your revenues are typically down. So, Charlie, on this slide, it, it shows the county's fund balance history over the past five years. And you know, to me, it's, it's always interesting to, to kind of reflect back on where you were compared to where things currently stand. And you know, as you can see, with the exception of fiscal year twenty, which again, was obviously a new, a unique year due to COVID, you know, you all have done a really good job of continuing to increase your fund balance. So again, hats off to you all on that. One final slide here, again, as I mentioned earlier, is just to disclose some information that the auditing standards require, so we communicate to you all. Again, with you all receiving a clean opinion with no audit findings, the, the information here is essentially formality, but we had no difficulties or disagreements with management during our audit. We had no uncorrected misstatements, and again, we are independent of the county, as required by governmental auditing standards. And with that, unless anybody has any specific questions, that concludes my presentation. But you know, again, as I mentioned earlier, there's quite a bit of information in this report. What I've tried to do is just hit the highlights of what I think is of most importance to you all. But if there's anything I didn't touch on that you all have questions about, please don't hesitate to ask. But again, this year's audit went extremely well. I want to thank your staff for their hard work. We certainly appreciate the opportunity to be of service to you all, and look forward to working with you in the future.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Taylor.
Yes. Hey, hey, David, thank you so much. And I too agree that the county, every department worked so diligently, the administration, doing a fantastic job. And I just wanted to, one, say thank you to them and congratulate them on seven straight years of, of excellence and being rewarded of that. Question, though, when we look at the auditors, discussion and analysis begins on page twelve with the GASB statements. It was quite a few statements in there. What are your opinions about when do we, you know, start looking at correlating these into our, or do we have to do this immediately, all of these statements?
No, they're, they're, they're all implemented in, in different fiscal years. And you know, this is just some FYI of what's coming down the pipe. Our firm has, has free C P E for our clients, and, and John, I know, does participate in that C P E. We're in well advance of the implementation of these GASB standards. We, we, we provide that C P E to make sure that all of our clients are understand what's going on. There's no surprises. So when these standards are required to be implemented, you know, we're in a proactive position and not a reactive position. So you know, we've already had those discussions with management about these GASB implementations. I will say this, there's really nothing major coming down that is, that is of significance, like there happened in prior years, you know, several years ago, when we had to implement GASB sixty-eight, where we had to record your net pension liability on the books. You know, that really changed your, your, your balance sheet per se. So there's really nothing that significant coming down the pipe so far. But again, that, that information is in there just to kind of give you all a heads up of, of what is, what is coming.
Got it. Yeah, thank you, Ms. Chair.
Ms. Chair, I have a question of.
Okay.
All right. All right. David, my question for you is, I noticed you said we had a seventy point five million dollar in total liabilities. Is that in sync with what we could possibly, for a budget our size, is that the norm?
Yeah, again, that's, that's at the Indywide level. So you know, your, your, your net pension liability, your OPEB liability is included in that, which again, you got seventy million dollars, but the vast majority of that, fifty-five and a half million, are long-term in nature, that, that are, that, that, again, as I said earlier, are, are not due, you know, in, in, in this current fiscal year, that are, you know, do several years down the line. So you know, when I look at your Indywide balance sheet, total assets of ninety-eight million dollars, liabilities of seven, you know, you all are in a good, liquid financial position. You know, that balance sheet looks strong to me.
Thank you, David, and thanks to the staff, or the administrator, and the, and the, and the finance staff, and everyone else that played a role in, in having the budget looking the way it did. I appreciate you all.
Any other questions or comments?
Kevin, I'd like to echo that. I certainly appreciate all the hard work that all the administration does, and John and his staff, and the treasurer, and administrator. We appreciate all they do, and if it wasn't for them, we wouldn't have a report like this. And that's a great report, and I, I am real proud of the work that they've done for our county. Thank you.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, I feel the same way, sir. We thank everybody, thank everybody that's in charge.
All right. I'll echo the same. And David, I appreciate you being, being here to present that to us. And it looks like you did a lot of, a lot of hard work. So we appreciate your work and, and getting this report for us. And you're more than welcome to hang around if you want to watch our meeting.
If it's all right with you, I think I'll log off. But I, yeah, we, we appreciate the opportunity to be of service to you all. And yeah, please don't hesitate to reach out to us if, if we can be of further assistance.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much.
All right. Y'all have good evening.
Good evening. All right, you too. All right. Next, under item six, appearance and public presentations, item B, we have Mr. David Smalls with us from the South Carolina Artisan Center. David, I know you're on mute, but are you gonna make, you got a little presentation for us this evening?
Actually, I, I just had a few words to say, I was, be real quick.
Okay.
I'll just get started. I'd like to thank Councilman Taylor for allowing me to speak. I just really wanted to introduce myself. I, you know, as, I know everyone here, but I wanted to let you guys know that I am now at the Artisan Center as the executive director, started in November, and I'm really excited about the potential opportunities that are awaiting us here at the center. As you probably are aware, it's, it has been in the area since nineteen ninety-four. It is the official folk art and craft center of South Carolina. We have probably a little over two hundred, two hundred and twenty-five artists from thirty-eight of the forty-six counties. And so we're very proud of that. And we have two during process throughout the year to bring in new artists, and we're looking to try to see where our vacancies are in those counties that we do not have any artists to try to get them here. We have done well in reference to artists that are in Collin County that are a part of the center, so which is great. I did want to share a, a few numbers with you just to show you how well we are doing at the center. For the past six months, we're on a fiscal year from Ju- July one to June thirtieth. For the past six months, we had gross profits of two hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars, and we had expenses of ninety thousand, which were the net total net of a hundred and eighty-four thousand, and I'm just rounding that. But we are doing well. We, we have definitely bounced back since the onset of the pandemic. We closed for a few months and had, you know, definitely no traffic in, in reference to sales. But we're definitely doing well, and we're looking to do better and, and really grow our online presence and do other initial things. Real quick, there is, there, we're partnering with Clemson University with an ag and art tour. We're going to start, there's gonna be ten counties that'll be in that tour, which is showcasing farms and how art can interact in that regard. We'll be doing, we're the first county, which will be May fourteenth and fifteenth, and then it'll go every weekend until the last weekend in June. So we're really excited about that. So far, we have six farms, and we're looking at artists that will be at those farms. So again, really excited, and thank you for the few minutes to explain and tell you what's new at the center, and that's my opportunity of working there. Are there any questions?
All right. Thank you, David. Does any of the council members have any questions?
Is there a flyer available for the May fourteenth and fifteenth?
Uh, there will be, and I will get all that out. We're working with Clemson, so it's a consolidated information, and we're, we're part of that, and so that will be coming out very soon.
Okay. And thank you, Mr. Smalls, and, and congratulations on your new appointment.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, hearing none. Thank you, David. Congratulations and good luck in your.
I appreciate it.
So we're glad to have, glad to receive your presentation.
I will leave.
Hearing no other comments, we'll move on, on the agenda. Item seven, administrative briefing. Mr. Griffin, I'll turn it over to you. You're on. I don't know if you're on mute. Oh, no, now you're on mute. Sorry. You're on mute, Kevin.
You may have to go sit with Doc Flowers.
Go out and tell him you're on mute. You want me to tell it?
Yeah, everything's very low on my end.
I'll go tell it. I can hear he's back here. I'll be, I'll go.
You're still, we can't hear you.
He said, give him a second.
Yeah, you can't hear it. Okay.
Must have fell down.
Hello, hello.
Okay, we can hear you.
They got you.
Can't see you, but we can hear you.
I had to go into my settings. Give me a sec.
Now we see you.
Now we don't hear you again. Mr. Chair, can you move to the public hearing and come back to the administrator's briefing, give them a chance to reboot?
Um, we can.
We can't hear you.
Here we go. How about?
We got you.
We got.
Here we are.
Okay, we got you.
Got it?
Yeah.
We can hear you.
Sorry about that. I didn't have but a few items for you. First item on new business, just wanted to update you. This was the project we talked about in our last meeting. It is moving forward. We will, they got delayed a little bit. Their staff had some COVID issues, but we will be finishing up negotiating incentives next week on Wednesday and Thursday, but they were ready to go ahead and do first reading on the Fee and Lue project. And the other item, item B, which I think will be good news to all Collitonians and everybody else in the region, is that in February, they are going to start repaving I ninety-five from St. George down to Point South. The company that won the contract contacted us through D O T, and some local help they had here about the use of our facility there on Maple Ridge Road. We've got a number, a good bit of acreage there around the small fire station we have, and they're gonna use that, requested if they could temporarily lease that site to do the staging of their equipment and personnel at for the roughly twelve to eighteen months of construction up and down I ninety-five there. So of course, anytime we deal with a right in land, we've got to do an ordinance. So we'll get that started this month. But we are excited to hear that's coming down the pipe. Other than that, that's all we really have, is kind of a shortage into the night. I'll be glad to take any questions.
Okay. Anybody got questions for the administrator? Okay, hearing none. We'll move then to item eight, public hearing under item eight, ordinance twenty-one dash oh dash sixteen. Well. Well, do we have a motion to go in public hearing first?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. We're now in a public hearing and the first item in public hearing is ordinance 21-0-16 to reapportion Collin County Council East and West Districts to meet federal and state requirements based on United States Census 2020 population data. Do we have anyone who would like to make any comments regarding this particular ordinance or have we received, if anyone in the administration knows if we have received any comments related to this public hearing?
No, sir, we have not.
Okay, hearing no comments. Is there a motion that would close the public hearing?
Oh, move.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries unanimously. That'll bring us then to item nine, old business, item eight, third reading ordinance 21-0-16 to reapportion Collin County Council East and West Districts to meet federal and state requirements based on United States Census 2020 population data.
So move.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? And that motion carries unanimously. That'll bring us to item 10, new business. Item made first reading, ordinance 22-0-01 by Todd Lonely and ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of tax agreement by and between Collin County and an industry currently known to the county as Project Ruby, whereby Collin County will enter into a fee in lieu of taxes agreement arrangement with Project Ruby providing for the payment by Project Ruby of certain fees in lieu of ad lorm taxes, providing for assignment of certain existing economic development incentives to Project Ruby, providing for certain special source revenue or infrastructure credits to further amend the multi-county industrial/business park agreement between Collin County, South Carolina and Hampton County, South Carolina, providing for the development of a jointly owned and operated industrial/business park so as to include additional property in Colliton County as part of the park, providing for the allocation of fee in lieu of tax, taxes paid by Project Ruby under the agreement for the establishment of multi-county industrial/business park and other matters relating there to.
So move.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Item B, first reading ordinance 22-0-02 by Todd Lonely authorizing the execution of a temporary lease agreement between Collin County and Collie Contracting Incorporated for the staging of personnel and equipment related to the I-95 construction and repaving from St. George to Point South.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries unanimously. Item C, resolution 22-R-07 to officially name the Cottageville Park and Playground.
So move. Second.
We got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries unanimously. Item D has been removed, so that'll bring us to item 11, items for information of public record. There are none this evening. Item 12, public comments. At this time, if we have anyone who is online who would like to make any comments, this would be the time or if, Megan, if anyone has sent, I have not received any public comments, but if there have been any submitted, please, please let me know.
No, sir, there have not.
Okay. It does not appear that we have any public comments, so that'll bring us to item 13, council time. Any members of council have any comments?
Ms. Chair, just wanted to mention that I do believe, I spoke with Matt Mardel and Eartha Cunningham, the county has worked to put together a Black History program. It's later in the month, like the 27th, I believe, of, of the month. Somewhere down in there.
That is, that is correct.
Okay, so I guess when the flyer comes, they'll get it out to us and unless anyone has it already, just wanted to make sure everybody was aware of that.
Okay, all right. Any, any other comments?
Ms. Chair, I have a comment. It's also my understanding that Mr. Garland is putting together a program for the 20th, another Black History program.
Right.
And, and one, Ms. Chair, one of the things that I would like for us to, to definitely take up in our budget session are, I was approached by the news media this week and the concerns of, that they had about so many offices leaving and the vacancies that are there in law enforcement because of the pay structure. And that is something that I would like for us to definitely look into and or the administrator to look into and see how we can fix that because we don't want to be the training ground for other counties. We train the officers and as soon as they get their certification, we don't have any leverage to keep them here and they go on and serve elsewhere. And we got some pretty good ones and we would like to retain those if possible.
Okay, so noted. Anybody got any other comments? Okay, hearing none. The next item we have on our agenda is executive session. We have a contractual matter involving the magistrate's court, real estate matter regarding an easement, Green Pond Railway, and personnel matters involving the assessments office in the Parker Court. Is there a motion that we go into executive session?
So move, move.